All right. Good evening and welcome to the Samamish City Council Study Session for Thursday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, April 10th. Since we are in a study session where you move fairly quickly today, and we will begin with public comment, there is a sign up sheet reminding everybody that you have three minutes unless you're from an organized group, in which case you have five minutes for a public comment. While she's getting that, I will mention that you may notice that we're a little short manned up on the top. I'm accompanied here by Councilmember Chris Ross, but we do on the telephone have a number of our other council members present or about to join. We have Councilmember Tom Hornish is here. We have Councilmember Pam Stewart. Is Karen Moran on?
No, I don't believe so.
No, I guess she is not on. And do we have anybody else that I've missed?
Jason Ritchie's here.
And Jason Ritchie is on? Or, good, excellent. All right. Well, we have a long sign up sheet. I've got two names here with potential of two others in process, and we'll begin with the infamous and valuable citizen Mary Dorr to start us off.
Hold on one second, Mary.
There's a little button that I need to press.
And please start by giving us your name and address for the record.
My name is Mary Dorr. My address is 3362 213th Place Southeast, Samamish, 98075. Wow, I've never been to a council meeting when it was so scarce, but everybody's listening, right? I'm here, oh, city manager and the city council members, I'm so happy that I'm able to give public comment on this topic. I'm here to address the 7.25 acres owned by the YMCA adjacent to the current Pine Lake Middle School. There has been some discussion about putting a structure such as an indoor soccer facility on the site, but apparently this has been dismissed, so that is good news. An informal survey revealed 60% of residents want to keep the seven acres as it is presently, while in previous polls, the city has conducted 90% of the residents want to keep, excuse me, our remaining trees and preserve open space. Keeping our trees is important for so many reasons, but one is protecting the kokanee salmon. The Friends of Pine Lake started monitoring and protecting this species some 20 years ago. There have been ups and downs. One up time was a visit not long ago by the Secretary of Interior along with schoolchildren who released fry into Lake Samamish on the Pereira property. The downtime is now. The latest was a count of seven kokanee returning from all tributaries into Lake Samamish at Christmas this past year. The Laughing Jacobs sub-basin must be protected, or the little red fish, as the Native Americans called them, could likely be gone forever. The property is one of the last forested areas along 228th in Samamish and simply needs to be preserved. The topography of the site does not lend itself to a large structure, but there are 15 diseased trees that could be removed for a pavilion to be used as an outdoor educational environmental center for Pine Lake Middle School and Sunny Hills students. Low-impact trails are used by cross-country teams and should be allowed to continue. The possibilities are endless. During non-school usage, other residents could use the pavilion for a meeting place or could just hike through the woods. Additionally, we need to protect the habitat of the diverse wildlife that uses this forested area. We need your vision to do what is best for the residents of Samamish and protect what we have left. Please purchase this property and preserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Karen Herring is next on the list.
Karen Herring, 23684 Southeast 32nd. I totally ditto everything there. Please consider the 50-year lease on the YMCA, though. It's located adjacent, you know where it is now. If some non-passive recreation is necessary, it does not have to include development or large structures. Recreation can be created even using the nature that is on the property. Imagine all of the options, they're countless. The YMCA is ever-present already with volunteer efforts and promotes passive recreation programs that this property has the potential to provide for, for the stewards who take care of restoration, salvation, I mean salvage of development and such, that could go on this property. The YMCA collaborates with the Outdoor Leadership Club, Teen Volunteer Corps, and the City of Samamish to these and so many more efforts at Evans Creek, Earth Day, E-Bright Creek, and these invitations are on the Samamish website as well as the YMCA website. The last effort was a stewardship project on Saturday, March 24th, at East Lake Samamish, helping to remove invasive species to help protect those salmon, and that was on a person's property. There are many events listed on these offerings, I think I already said that. The 2018 draft pro-plan included two motions that were recommended, proposed, voted on, and passed unanimously. These include that the city not purchase a feasibility study for an indoor fieldhouse within the Samamish community at this time, and renegotiate with the YMCA the terms of the ground lease agreement to include potential passive recreation on this property. Consider the definition for passive recreation. Outdoor recreational activities such as nature observation, hiking, canoeing, kayaking, that require a minimum of facilities or development and that have a minimal environmental impact on the recreational site. So it's clear and it's beautiful that the Y and our own community, our volunteers are already very involved in passive recreation all the time here in this city. I'd like to ask that the city and the YMCA contract to continue to lease this property. The property is already available to give back more, and it meets the requirements that you've checked on your agenda today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Karen. Those are the only ones I have currently on the public comment sheet. Would anybody else like to add public comment? Mary, please step up.
Hello, my name's Mary Victor. I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Samamish. I wanted to say two things. So for April Fools, I had sent you guys a teleportation pin button from King County, sort of as a joke they did in 2017. And back from that, I actually got another April Fools joke from somebody about a Sasquatch that had been seen up by Snoqualmie Pass. And it turns out that that link is actually about the natural wildlife corridor that was created by how they constructed the road up there, because when it's lifted up, the wildlife can pass, so even people that never support construction projects pass that. So I've gotten that link from Jan Bird, and I'll forward it for your consideration, because I don't know if there's an opportunity to do something that would allow wildlife to do that with our Bridge versus Culver construction that we've got considered. But I thought it was a great email, and it's a good link to watch. It's very short and concise, and it came out of an April Fools joke, so that was a good thing. The second thing is, I had spoken recently on doing what I call an "I-study," because "I-study," and it was, does removing trees affect hydrology? And so I actually got good feedback from different people in the community from that, so I hope that you guys have looked at that, and if you haven't, I hope you'll consider it. So I wanted to add on to that, trees have very large roots, and the roots go a long way down, like 70 to 100, 125 feet, even 200 feet. So the top of the tree isn't just worth looking at, but what happens underneath. And the data that I provided last time said that the water table can change rather drastically on what you're doing. So I think when we think about things, we need to think about that the trees are there, what impact can it have? A couple of the other speakers have mentioned that the YMCA property is in the Laughing Jacobs sub-basin or basin. That plan is not being studied yet. I believe it's the next one after Zaccoose Creek. So I think it would be probably a good idea to get part of that basin studied done before you see what to do with that, because the city had done a couple basin plans in the past for Inglewood and for Thompson for Town Center, but they're just starting them again. And they're trying to use the Zaccoose basin kind of as a pattern for what to do. And then, just a little bit more on trees. If you didn't get the report that I gave before and you didn't understand, I'm going to share a little bit of my vocation with you. I went on holiday to Glenwood Springs, Colorado, last year, and on top of the mountain, it's 7,100 feet of elevation, there is some amusement park, and you can do this really cool ride. And there are these limestone caverns that you can see, which is really cool. So I took the tour, and there's three different rooms that you walk down to. And at one point, they get about 70 feet down in the limestone cavern. It's 52 degrees Fahrenheit all year round there, because if you've never been in a limestone cavern, it's just enclosed and the water's there. And at about 70 feet down, we looked up at the ceiling, and the guide says, okay, we're 70 feet down, what's that brown stuff there? And we all looked around, and I'm thinking it's like bat poop or something. And they said, no, that's actually the tree roots from the very top of this 7,000-foot mountain, and they've come down 70 feet within that. So it's in Glenwood Springs, Colorado. I don't have a photo, but I just wanted to share that with you as part of my "I-study." Continue, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anybody else who wants to speak before to the council during public comment? If not, I will close public comment. Public comment is closed, and we will continue with our agenda. Our next item on the agenda is the discussion, Eastside Fire and Rescue. And city manager, you want to do the intro?
Thank you, Councilmember Valderrama. We are fortunate tonight to have our fire chief here, Chief Jeff Clark. Welcome, chief. So the chief is going to share with us the Eastside Fire and Rescue 2017 annual report and give us some good information. So, chief, please.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, members of the council. Oh, thank you. So the screen is warming up, so the slides are coming up now. So I know you received the slides ahead of time, so I'll go through these first couple. First of all, the purpose of the meeting, or of this update, is to provide the 2017 annual report, then review a couple of Samamish-specific items. One is reviewing the Medic 21 mitigation project, and then a review of the EMS levy process that we're going through. And then, what is on the slate for 2018 for EFER? So first of all, this is a standard format that I provide to all of our cities that are partners in Eastside. And as you see here, specific for Samamish, we like to give some comparables, first of all. The upper left provides the number of firefighters or full-time employees per 1,000 population for similar-sized areas in King County. And you'll see that we are operating with fewer employees than anybody else in the county when it comes to the fire service. Then total incidents, the next one over to the right shows that for 2017, incidents per 1,000 population. This one, the first one on the far left refers to Samamish. That shows 61 incidents per 1,000 population. EFER's at 131. And then you can see the various cities across there. There is an asterisk by Bellevue. I know it's hard to see on there. The asterisk represents that they also wrap in, because they are the ALS provider or the paramedic provider, they wrap in some numbers there that we cannot extract, so it's not, that one's not an apples-to-apples. Their number is probably a little lower than what it is, but not too much. And as you'll see, something we know about Samamish is that we have a low call volume for the 62,000 people that reside here. Generating 61 calls per 1,000 is a very low call volume, considering the size of this city. So that's a good thing when it comes to the safety of the community, and is a good indicator for the healthy community as well. You can see that our incidents, which is the middle one on the left, our incidents were pretty flat. There's only a difference of four between 2016 and 2017. You'll notice a big spike between 15 and 16, and just as a reminder, that was Klahani. Bringing Klahani over shifted the calls. We didn't see a spike in call volume, it just simply shifted it from District 10 to Eastside, or to Samamish. And then you'll see the effective tax rate. We do an evaluation, simply, we just simply take the operating budget of comparable organizations and the AV for our areas. And you'll see that EFER operates at 83 cents per 1,000, and that within that, Samamish is actually providing fire services for 52 cents. And that's remarkable, considering that this is something that's measured throughout the county, and that's a very low cost of operation for both EFER and Samamish. And then you'll see the six-year incident history. It breaks down those 2,170 calls. There is an asterisk within this on the other, in 2015, on other and nonstructure fires. That indicated, we changed the way we report the data in other. We actually changed the definition of a nonstructure fire at that time, so we switched the way we reported. We did not actually get a spike in calls there, we just simply changed the columns that they're being tracked in. So we just wanted to note that there, so you can see the dramatic differences in each of those columns. Again, this is just another way to depict the, compare your call volume. Again, it's been pretty steady, there hasn't been a marked increase over the years. You've been pretty consistent, a gradual increase, but nothing, nothing that stands out as a concern.
Could you basically explain what AFA stands for?
Yes.
It's an acronym.
AFA is Automatic Fire Alarm.
Thank you.
I apologize. You know, I get asked that every time I produce this report, you'd think I'd spell it out, but...
Right, and then MVA?
And an MVA is a motor vehicle accident, and then EMS, of course, is Emergency Medical Call.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, this next slide is a few different ways to look at the data. Basically, we're looking at time of day and day of weeks on this slide to assess when call volume happens. And as you would expect, from about 7:00 in the morning till somewhere around 10:00 o'clock at night, when the majority of the calls, usually about 66% of the calls, 2/3 of our calls happen during that window of time, and then at night, of course, they do tail off. And this wave is consistent in all five of our jurisdictions that we provide for at EFER. You could almost lay them right over each other. And although you can see spikes in that table for day of week, the lowest one represented there is 292 calls on Saturdays, and Mondays are 332 calls. This is a little bit different. In many cities, you will see spikes on Saturdays and Sundays as their busy time, but obviously it's busier here during the week. But again, based on the low call volume, it's, these look like dramatic numbers, but they really are not. This slide just shows the response times to the various calls. The first one's the automatic fire alarms. The darker, the darker table on the left indicates the turnout time, so that's how much time, from the time the alarm goes off in the station till the firefighters are actually on the rig rolling their wheels down the road. And then the lighter color and the longer duration represents the actual travel time. So from the time they leave the station property till the time they arrive at the property that called in the emergency. And you'll see we're anywhere from, you know, 4 and 1/2 minutes to 6 minutes and 10 seconds of travel time overall. This is consistent with the way we have been performing. Again, there's, there aren't marked improvements or marked drop-offs in this data at all compared to previous years. And for those of you that have been at the EFER board meetings, you know that we just updated the goals. We have brought down the response time goals and the turnout time goals. So next year, you'll see, hopefully, better performance on where we are. We are targeting that this year, and just implemented a new response time policy internally. And then significant incidents, we've just mapped here for 2017. You can see there are 31 cardiac arrests that we were dispatched to in Samamish. 22 were true cardiac arrests. You can see the breakdown for male and female. And then you'll see that there were nine confirmed structure fires. We're dispatched to many more structure fires than this. A confirmed structure fire is a fire that, when we arrive, we actually find the structure burning. If it's a food on the stove, where there is a fire on the stove top, we would not count that as a confirmed structure fire. This is, these are significant fires where a portion or a large amount of the structure actually burned. All right? Again, nothing remarkable in the data here, pretty consistent with what you've seen in previous years.
Chief, could you comment on, it looks like there are several hearts around Station 82. Is that for people that actually are going to the station for assistance? And I know we recommend against doing that.
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good question, and I wish, because they're not stacked right on top of each other, I'm going to say it's probably just coincidence, and it's in the neighborhood around there. There could have been a walk-in to the station, and absolutely, we suggest, even if you're across the street, call us. We will, you will get a quicker response than walking across the street, and we have to pull everyone together without the alarm. It will be much quicker for us coming around.
Right, and there is a chance that you could also be out on a call and not be available at the station.
Yes, there is, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that really was the annual report on the 2017, kind of the standard report. Not hearing any questions, I'd like to go into the Medic 21 mitigation project. And as a reminder, during six months of, the end of 2017, it ended at the January 31st of 18, we were successful in asking King County EMS to put up an extra ALS unit, so this is a paramedic unit, to respond to calls while we had a number of construction projects going on within the city of Samamish and surrounding areas. This included in Redmond and in the city of Issaquah. And I've got some maps a little while later to describe the paramedic system as a whole. But we placed that medic at Station 83, and, which is the one near Klahani at the Roundabout. The reason we chose that station was we were looking to be able to get to north Samamish quicker because of where some of the construction projects are, especially during the day, and to assess response times and collect data. We ran this unit 12 hours a day during that peak time, from about 8:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night, and each day was a little bit different, but roughly it was 8:00 to 8:00. And we did that for the six months straight, every day of the week. And during that time, you'll see that we responded on 292 paramedic-level responses. The red dots on the map indicate where those responses were. You can see that only 105 of those responses were actually in Samamish, all right? But there were 105 responses in Samamish during the day during those six months that required a paramedic to be on scene. And then you can see we also serviced, you know, areas of Issaquah, Fall City, Carnation definitely benefited from having that unit in service during this time. Now, one of our goals was to look at response time, not only now, but moving into the future. But you can see the number of calls, and we looked at response times a few different ways, and I picked the table that's on, on the right on your screen, just to demonstrate, okay, what kind of improvements did we see? And this data comes from King County EMS. As far as, we aggregated the data, we're telling the story maybe a little different, but they use averages. Industry standard in the fire service is to use a 90% time, but we do not have the data in that format. We have it as averages right now, to be consistent with the way King County EMS reports this throughout the county. But Medic 21 was the unit we stood up, which is indicated with the 7 minutes and 14 seconds was the average for the calls that they responded to within Samamish. And what this table does is it shows, over the course of the last three years, where, what the response times were for the existing permanent units, Medic 14, 19, 2, 1, and 3, to addresses that Medic 21 responded to during the six months that it was in service. So this indicates over all five of the existing units, that Medic 21 had a much better response time than what those existing units had to the same addresses that we'd been responding to over the last three years. So we did, we did see an improvement in response times where we had the calls during that timeframe, which is what we anticipated. Now, part of the talk around Medic 21 was identifying, we had, the council identified through a report that was given during, by King County EMS last year, that there were areas of Samamish that do not receive or response time as quickly as some areas within the county. And how the county ALS system works, again, it's operated by the county, but they operate a number of units. And on this map, they're indicated by the red stars. And to indicate what some of the council members identified at a public meeting with response times is where you see Samamish up there to the right of Samamish Lake. I know this is hard to read, I don't expect you to be able to read the numbers, but what's important here is looking at the colors. If it's green on this map, then the response times are in the, in the area of about five or six minutes, okay? As it gets darker and into the red, then the response times are getting much slower. And you'll see that north Samamish represents a, on average, a lower response time than what many areas of the county, but not all areas of the county are. We started talking to King County EMS about this, and in the levy process that I'm about to start to talk about, which the new levy for the ALS will go into effect from 2020 to 2025, if it is passed by the voters in 2019, we are currently planning, and when I say "we," the King County EMS community, are currently planning the levy process during the course of 2018. And we're looking at maps like this to identify what the needs are for the next six-year process. The challenge we have when we look at the ALS system is that, of course, like anything else, there's finite resources, and we have a large area to cover with a, with a defined number of response units, which are indicated up here. For our purposes, the majority of units that respond into Samamish are either Medic 14, which is based in the Highlands in Issaquah, Medic 19, which is in the downtown Redmond area, and then occasionally Medic 2, which is on the other side of Lake Samamish in South Bellevue. Primarily, those are the three units that handle responding into Samamish. From a call volume perspective, there's no question that those three units can handle the call volume that comes out of Samamish. It's simply the distance and the topography that gets in the way and creates the slower response times in these areas. So we are actively working through the process, the planning process of the levy, and these are, these are things that we bring up. And we're going to continue to talk about the response time issues in Samamish, which I have a couple other slides, I just want to demonstrate a few things for you. Oops, wrong button, apologize for that. To go along with that map, and I'll, this one you can read a little bit better, this map indicates how many responses there were in the quarter-mile grids that are represented. You can see that north Samamish, while, when I go back to this map, oops, once again, I hit the wrong one. When you go to this map, you can see the red, yellow, and orange that are in north Those areas, you'll see that many of these response areas have 1, 2, 4, 8, 9, 10 responses. These are not high-demand areas. The highest-demand area in north Samamish is right about where we are, and that's 23. And that's over the course of a year, 23 calls within the square-quarter mile that we reside in here. And that becomes one of the challenges when we look at covering an area the size of Samamish that doesn't generate a lot of calls, but when, when we do, the, any call that's generated in Samamish or anywhere else is just as important as anything else we respond on. So this zooms in a little bit to see the average response times that we have in north Samamish, and you can see the numbers a little bit more clearly there. One of the questions that we asked the county was, where are there similar situations where you would have a similar population base, which have similar response times? And, excuse me, two have been identified thus far in our talks. One is Mercer Island and the Covington area, and the other one is Maple Valley. And these, these have been longstanding areas where it just takes a little bit while, while longer to respond, and there is also a corresponding lower call volume in those areas. So the EMS levy process is going through, in 2018, has formed four subcommittees that are made up of fire chiefs, politicians, and other interested parties from King County EMS to talk about and focus on the four subcommittee areas of BLS, ALS, Regional Services, and Finance. Your city manager, Lyman, has been at a few of these meetings. My staff has been at every one of the meetings that has held, and will continue to be throughout the process, to represent Samamish and EFER and advocate for the issues that we feel are important. The thrust of these meetings right now are really to identify, where is the King County EMS system operating effectively, and where can we improve? We are rapidly, just this afternoon, shifting into, all right, what, what are some of the budget markers we're looking for in the levy moving forward, and some of the things that will drive the budget? And over the course of the next couple of months, we will be finalizing that. Now, one of the, one of the reasons this levy process, besides the, some of the response issues in Samamish that we'd like to see addressed, but one of the reasons that the EMS levy process is most important to Samamish this year is that when you annexed Klahani, your population went over 50,000. Under the state law, what happens is when you have, in King County, because we Now, one of the, one of the reasons this levy process, besides the, some of the response issues in Samamish that we'd like to see addressed, but one of the reasons that the EMS levy process is most important to Samamish this year, is that when you annexed Kohani, your population went over 50,000. Under the state law, what happens is when you have in, in King County, because we have a countywide EMS levy, when a city has a population over 50,000, then your city will be asked to take action on a resolution to support the King County-wide EMS levy to move forward. All right? What was required was that, and currently there are 11 cities that, or 11 jurisdictions that have 50,000 people or more, what was required was that 100% of those jurisdictions had to pass the ordinance before King County Council could move forward with that to put it on the ballot as a countywide measure. House Bill 2627 was just approved in this last legislative session, which moved that down to 75% of those 11 cities, which means nine of the 11 cities need to pass an ordinance in support of the, the countywide EMS levy. So some, either way, Samamish is going to be asked to consider an ordinance at the end of this levy planning process. So towards the end of this year, early part of 2019, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance to support the, the countywide levy being put on the ballot. We're nowhere close to having that drafted yet. That's what the EMS county, or countywide levy is about, the planning process that we're doing now. But I do want you to understand that you will be asked, and an ordinance will be coming forward later in the year, once the planning process is completed. Now, Tom Hornish was representing you on the, on this EMS planning process. I believe Karen Moran is now shifting to that. I've got a meeting with her next week to bring her up to date on where we're at in the process. And she will probably be your best avenue from this point moving forward. And of course, I will be at any time, if you have any questions on this process at all, moving forward. And as we get to the point where an ordinance is, is drafted, and we have a timeframe for when you'll be asked, of course, we'll come with, with data and support and all, all the information you need in order to make a decision on what you want to do on that levy. This, this, King County EMS is a, is a well-run organization that's been established since 19, the early 70s, providing ALS services to King County. It's a, it's well entrenched here. The fire service and the EMS system work hand in, hand in hand together. We have received great service. And one of the things I neglected to say is, when we were going back on those maps with the response time, and although we have the slower response times within North Samamish, one of the things that King County EMS, their hallmark data point that they hold up is our survival, survivor rate for cardiac arrests. Now, I'm biased, because you receive great BLS care in North Samamish. The North Samamish survival rate is 71%. The county average is 55%, which is a hallmark in the country. It's something that the, that the program is very proud of. But in Samamish, rest assured that the outcomes that we see in Samamish are, are surpassing the outcomes that are being seen countywide. Okay? I should have said that earlier on. Any questions on the levy process?
Just an observation from my side. Small point, but we were already over 50,000 when Kohani came in, just over it, but just slightly in there. A question, what was driving the desire for the change from having unanimous to 75%?
Well, I, I can only speak to the few meetings that I heard this. I wasn't part of the planning or anything on that. The, there are, I believe that the organized firefighters and the, one of the fire groups, I believe it was the fire commissioners, but don't quote me on that, there were interested parties that thought that as more and more communities go over 50,000, it gets harder and harder to get to a unanimous point where King County can put this on the ballot. When this first started in the 70s, I believe there were only four communities that were at 50,000. And we have 11 now, and I guess there are a couple of other communities that are teetering on going over 50. It, it was just felt that holding a standard at 100% by those interested parties was more difficult to, to get in time. And they wanted to ensure that the King County process, or, or the King County EMS system was able to survive. So I believe that's the-
Or another way of saying that, another way of saying that, Chief, is so that no one city has the veto power to prevent it from going on to the ballot.
Well said.
So any of the other council members in the cloud or Ross have questions? Okay. All right, go on, Chief.
All right. My, my last slide is simply, I put together a list, since we, you gave me the opportunity to provide an annual report to, of things that you can expect from EFER over the next year. And, and many of these processes are already well underway. But we have, as we identified in our plan last year, we are implementing a two-year budget process in order to match what most of our partners are on. So we'll be kicking that off in June. We've just completed an independent, independent financial process review from an outside accountant. This was not an audit. This was actually looking at our entire financial process. Will we be reporting out at our May board meeting on that? We also are working through a process currently with our, with our Finance and Administration Committee, which is populated by council members and commissioners from our partners. This is an attempt for us to unify behind one event ordinance, as it pertains to fire protection and the public safety from fire and EMS, with all of our partner agencies. As part of our budget process, we're overhauling the equipment replacement plan. As you'll recall, last year, we updated our facility maintenance plan. The year before that, we actually overhauled the entire budget process. So this is the last of our three parts of the budget to tackle, deep down into the details and, and kind of provide an overhaul of the, the entire system there. Further deployment strategy discussions, which we started last year, you'll be seeing that folded into our budget process and CIP process this year. Our reserve firefighter program has been completely transitioned over now. This is our volunteer firefighter program renamed to Reserve. It's been completely transitioned, and by the end of the year, should be fully staffed. So that'll be getting completed. The Fire Explorer program, which is really going to, I think, I think between Issaquah and Samamish, the number of high schools that reside in both, that the majority of this program will most likely be Samamish and, and Issaquah kids, based on the number of high schools we have here. And this is an opportunity for teenagers to get involved in the fire service profession and give back to their community from the ages of 14 to 21. We're kicking the program off this year. We're, we're targeting about, we're trying to get 20 individuals to get that going. And this will be something that is student-run and student-led, moving forward. Our facility master plan strategy will be completed. We've got the continued increasing hiring due to our retirements. And then the last two items have to do with you, council members and, and managers. Fire Ground 101, this is an opportunity to come out for a day, see what it's like to take part in the activities. Ramiro, you were out there last year-
Great event.
-to, to take part in the activities that firefighters do every day. We'll be scheduling that for September, is what it's looking like right now. We'll get a date as soon as it's finalized. And then our annual awards banquet will be May 19th at 10:30 a.m. at East Ridge Church, and you're all invited to attend. And that, that ceremony will take about an hour. It will be in and out as quick as we can. But if you can come help me recognize those that deserve it in the organization, I certainly appreciate it. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any more questions from our council members in the cloud?
Great, Chief, as always.
Oh, thank you, Chief.
Sorry.
Pam?
Oh, I just said thank, I just was thanking the chief, that's all.
Okay. And Chief, thank you from me and from the staff. We enjoy working with you and your organization very, very much. So thanks for the coordination and the partnership that you offer to us. Thank you.
You're welcome. And feelings the same.
Absolutely. Great work that you guys do. All right. Shall we move on to the next topic, which is Issaquah Falls City Road?
Okay. Thank you. We have, I'll introduce first Andrew Zagers, our city engineer, who will basically talk about the team effort that is going into responding to the questions that we've been asked related to the Issaquah Falls City Road, what the potential closure of that road might be for improvements. And I'll just let Andrew fill us in on what we have discovered and the process.
Good evening, council. We're here once again to, as mentioned, follow up to our last study session in regard to this project, and hopefully get, work towards a clear direction on whether we keep the road open or closed during the bridge construction. We have, again, a quick presentation to kind of go over what was presented before, but also in response to some questions that were raised in the last meeting. I'd like to introduce to my right, a couple of the members that are on our design team. I've got Rich Meredith from Lochner, and then our project manager, Sam Park. And then in the audience, over in the back, we have Molly Toy, another representative from Lochner on our design team. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Sam to go over the presentation.
Great. Thanks, Andrew. So tonight, I'll go over the agenda very quickly. We wanted to do a brief overview of the project, then get into Rich's traffic modeling efforts. We wanted to answer any questions that would come up from the traffic maps and traffic datas that we're presenting. And then we wanted to talk about moving forward, towards getting some direction from council, and maybe perhaps towards a May 1st resolution target date. So the project is Issaquah Falls City Road from 242nd to Kohani Drive, to give you, well, we have three roundabouts at 242nd, 247th, and Kohani, and we have a bridge crossing at the north fork of Issaquah Creek. The current timeline, we began in the spring of 2016. We did our community meetings. We've had three meetings, and we are at the 60% design level. We are looking to go to our final design by this summer. We'd like to have our TIB grant application in by the end of summer, August 18th. And the community meeting for is still in, we've had talks about when to have that meeting moving forward. Where we are, we've had this slide at our last, at the March 13th council study session. But where we are right now is at the stay the course. We, from the beginning of the project, we've had one lane open. We've designed the project with one lane of traffic open in each direction. And that, our current estimate with that option is 26.2 million. What we presented was that if we can close the roadway for the bridge construction, that estimate will go down to 22.3 million. And Rich has some information on his maps here to speak on. Thanks, Rich.
So what we did was, we took the city's travel demand model-
Oh, okay. So what we did was, we took the city's travel demand model and simulated the impacts of construction. So leaving, or keeping one lane open in each direction, what we did was we reduced the capacity of that segment between 242nd and Kohani, because we know that when there's construction going on, there's a lot of distractions, there's slower speeds through there, and the traffic signals are not as efficient. So the capacity is reduced there. And when we do that, then we, we develop the numbers of people that will divert around that area. There's still a lot of people that traveled down that road, but some people will choose to take other routes. And then to, based on some of the comments from our last presentation about what would the impacts be if we closed the road between 247th and Kohani, we ran the model again and then closed that segment and looked to see how traffic rerouted itself around that. So what you see up there on the left is the, the volume difference between the, the models in the, or the, the volumes in the 2016 traffic demand model. Sorry. That's the 2016 travel demand model, the current PM peak hour volumes. And then the difference between that and what would the volumes look like when the road is under construction are on the left. And then if we close the road, the, the numbers drop even further on Issaquah Falls City Road, as shown on the diagram on the right. Now, what I saw, looking through the, the changes, is that a number of cars would take Kohani Drive a lot more than the increase when we keep the road open. So that seems to be the road that takes the, the biggest increase in traffic. But looking at the, the total volume that would be on that road compared to the capacity of the road, it still is operating under capacity. Now, there's still an, an increase in the number of cars, and so the perception is going to be there's a lot more traffic on it, which there will be during the times of construction in the PM peak hour. But from a traffic operation standpoint, the roadway has the capacity to handle that.
So the, so the black numbers are, are basically increases. Positive black numbers are increases, and the red numbers with the negatives are decreases.
Yes.
Would be the best way to, to read these.
So we'd like to basically work towards a resolution, or, well, you want to go ahead, Jesse?
No, go ahead, finish.
Okay. So we're looking for the next steps from the council to stay the course with the roadway design, or work towards a May 1st resolution to either keep the roadway open or, or closed for bridge construction.
So I think where we are, unfortunately, we don't have the full council here tonight to, to see this in person. But I guess what we were looking at before, and I guess inclination that we received direction from the council previously, was to look at the numbers, and if there were no fatal flaws in the numbers that we saw, and we, the, the neighborhood streets, for example, in Kohani Drive, would not be over capacity, et cetera, that the inclination was that we would, in order to save about $4 million on the project, would be to bring forth a direction, or ask the council formally for direction, to close the roadway going forward as a, as a sense of direction. We're not looking for that direction tonight, because we don't take action tonight. But I think, based on what we're seeing, that would be something that we'd bring back to council in the near future for a formal discussion and decision, hopefully on that point.
Thank you, city manager. Let me open it up in case any of our council members in the cloud have questions first.
Ramiro, could I just say quick here? I, I wanted to mention, Chief Clark is here as well. And he stayed for this presentation, because I understand, last time, you did have questions for fire. So I just wanted to make sure the council members all knew that he was still here, should you have questions for him.
So noted. All right. Tom, Jason, Pam, you have any questions?
This is Jason. I do. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. Question regarding, specifically regarding access to Trosix and points along the Issaquah Falls City corridor. I'm assuming, based upon the previous council direction or sketch of direction, that the chief has formulated a plan that will compensate for the lack of road accessibility. If we do move forward with it being closed, are we going to see a commensurate relocation of resources to, to prevent any kind of falloff in response time?
And Chief has come up to the, to the dais.
All right. So I, I have had a conversation with Steve when we were exploring originally to close the road. When the direction was not to close it, we didn't have any further conversation up till about a month ago. We can place a unit, what I would recommend would be placing an aid car, a two-person unit, during peak time on the opposite end of the, on the Trosix end of things. That's, that's what I would recommend. It would cost somewhere in the neighborhood. It would be less than $350,000, the, and something like a contractor trailer or something like that in order to park it, unless there's something over there. We haven't scouted past that. But that would be my recommendation when the traffic is, is at its peaks. Sure, outside of that, that's, that's the only thing we've looked at to this point.
Thank you, Chief. Is there anything else we should do? I mean, I think, I mean, I will say, just from my own perspective, I live in Kohani, the sooner we get this done, the better. But having said that, it is critical that we have, you know, your blessing, for lack of a better word. I mean, I don't, we're saving quite a bit of money, and we're doing this faster, and I think that's good. But we can't do that at the cost of citizens being able to count on, you know, EFR being there and making sure that they have acted to that critical service. So if there's something else we need to do, if there's some other recommendation you would make, I would hope that you will present it as soon as possible, and you have my full support. I think this is a great idea, thank you.
Great, well, we, we will continue our conversations with ESEF Fire and Rescue. Also, we will continue conversations with our, our police department as well, to make sure that whatever impacts we would see, we can do our best to mitigate those.
Tom Hornish, Pam Stewart, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I've got, this is Tom, just to kind of weigh in, I don't have any questions, but if you want my thoughts now, or do you want me to wait?
Sure, your thoughts would be great.
I mean, I, I understand the EFR is a great point that Jason raised to make sure people aren't, you know, having that loss of service, so to speak. And I think, and I don't fully understand Christie's concern about the total aggregate number of cars. If we're just looking at peak, I guess we can talk about, the general rule of thumb is 10 times the peak hour is the total average daily traffic, rough rule of thumb, as I've learned from some of the traffic engineers. But I think it makes sense to, I'm only, I'm going to say the word or the term, rip the Band-Aid off. I still like the shorter period, especially because it saves money, and what I heard tonight is that it's still under capacity of the total average daily traffic, or of the capacity for the peak hour, a better way of saying it, even by diverting 100% of the traffic. So I think that makes a lot of sense, and the fiduciary duty for us to save money, a little bit less time of more pain, I think it's a good trade-off.
Ramiro, this is Pam, if I, I just want to clarify for those following along at home or who may watch it later, since this does only show the PM peak, I want to make sure that staff let folks know why the AM peak isn't included. And I also wanted to ask, because I do recall from last time, that, that part of the benefit of this, in addition to saving money, is that we save some trees. We don't have to take out as many trees, if we don't have to build the temporary roadway to keep it open, is that correct?
That is, that is correct.
That's a good point.
So very good point. I'll, I'll ask Andrew and his team to answer the first question. It's a very good question, why we're showing PM peak.
The, excuse me, the reason we're using the PM peak is that's what the current model that we have that we can use. When we do the, when we have been doing the design of the project, and also looking in analysis for possible detours, we do look at the AM counts, we do have traffic counts for the whole day, the whole week, and in regard to the intersections level of service, we do follow our standards, and we use that for the, we use AM counts for that. But right now, for this model, we only have a PM peak model right now to use for this presentation.
Well, and I, I, go ahead, Jesse.
Can you also elaborate a little bit? The PM peak is our worst congestion scenario.
That is correct. When looking at the, the traffic counts and review of them for this area, combined traffic for both westbound, eastbound traffic, during any part of the day, the PM peak is the worst case.
Right, so that is, that is why we're showing the, the PM peak, designing this for the AM peak, where the congestion is not as strong as the PM, quite honestly, wouldn't make sense. So here, we're looking at the worst-case scenario and trying to mitigate that and show that, so that's the bottom line.
Okay.
And then just one other follow-up question, if I may. Are there any other positive environmental impacts, other than just saving trees, by going with one design versus the other?
I can speak on that as well. Yes, there is, we're doing less impacts to the wetlands that are around the creek. By not doing the bypass road, we're not impacting wetlands, it's less mitigation that we would have to account for in addition to just trees, but that they, the wetland area as well.
Great, thank you.
You have another comment, Pam, or?
No. Okay, I think.
No, sorry.
Okay, I think we're, I think we're set. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you, chief.
We'll take the $4 million and the trees into consideration when we revisit this. All right, next one, we move on, is the YMCA Property Development Plan, city manager.
Okay, I'd like to introduce Anjali Meyer, our deputy parks director, who will lead us in the discussion related to the YMCA property next to the Pine Lake Middle School.
I'm Anjali Meyer, Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, and here to present on the YMCA property at this evening's study session. At the end of our presentation, we have a couple of questions for council, and the first is if the council will re, will authorize staff to renegotiate the terms of the recreational property ground lease agreement for the YMCA property to essentially extend the deadline by a year. And the second question is, we would like to hear what council's vision for this property The presentation is broken into five parts. First, we will give you an overview of the lease between the city and the YMCA. We'll provide a summary of the site analysis work that was done back in 2016. We will also give you a recap of the history of council direction. We will present the results of the statistically valid surveys that were done for the land acquisition strategy and the pro-plan, and then we'll look to council for direction to staff. First, to reorient everyone, the site is located, it's the red polygon you see at the south end of the map, and we are seated in City Hall, which is the green rectangle at the north end of the map. So the YMCA property is on 228th Avenue Southeast, two miles south of City Hall, adjacent to Pine Lake Middle School and the Isaguac School District Bus Barn. A little more about the property, it measures about 7.25 acres and was purchased by the YMCA back in 2005. And for comparison, Ebright Creek Park is about 12 acres, Pine Lake Park is about 19, and Beaver Lake Preserve is over 75 acres or so.
And then, Anjali, could you elaborate on why the Y bought that particular piece of property? What was their vision for use?
Their vision was to build the YMCA on that parcel. And they bought it from the school district, it was short-platted in 2003 by the school district, and then the YMCA purchased it in 2005. The current assessed value, this is just looking at the King County website, is 1.9 million. And as I mentioned, it's directly off of 228th Avenue Southeast to the west, Pine Lake Middle School to the north, and there's a shared driveway between the middle school and this property, and then you have the bus barn directly east. This property is also adjacent to the Park and Ride, which is west of 228th Avenue Southeast, and a bus stop, so it makes for really easy access and good overflow parking for anything that, any improvements made at this location. Water and sewer are also available on-site and was probably with the intent of building a YMCA at this location. Now we'll do a quick overview of the ground lease. So the recreational property ground lease is essentially a lease of this seven-acre property by the city from the YMCA, and this lease is part of the broader operating agreement for the Sammamish Community and Aquatic Center with the YMCA that was executed back in April of 2013. The reason the city wanted to include this piece of land in the operating agreement was the city's desire for future recreation uses. The term is a 25-year term with the option to extend for another 25 years, up to a total of 50 years, which is also consistent with the operating agreement for the Community and Aquatic Center. If the operating agreement for the Community and Aquatic Center terminates, then this lease automatically terminates. And the city also has a right to purchase the property at any point during the 50-year As part of this recreational property ground lease, the city committed to completing a development plan for this property by the end of June 2018. A development plan is really just a concept-level site plan, so we know what we are going to build on the site and very approximately what it's going to cost the city to do so. The intended use is for recreational facilities, and as written into the agreement, the site improvements may also include restroom and maintenance buildings, a clubhouse, parking, playfields, picnic facilities, playgrounds, utilities, et cetera. The cost of development is the responsibility of the city, and at the time this agreement was written, it was not intended to be a joint venture with the YMCA, but that is something if the council desires could be considered. Initial studies and analysis, in 2016, we did three preliminary studies, a wetland reconnaissance, a preliminary geotechnical study, and a very preliminary tree assessment report. And the reason was, you know, to see if we were to go in and develop the site, we wanted to understand its characteristics a little better. So the wetland reconnaissance, the property is located within Laughing Jacobs Creek SubBasin. There is a stormwater detention pond at the northwest corner of the site that is actually owned and maintained by the city, and it was built at the time of right-of-way improvements for 228th Avenue Southeast. There is also a stormwater drainage at the northeast corner of the property, which is really the drainage from the school property, but over the years, it has developed into a seasonal stream and a low-grade Category 3 wetland with a 75-foot buffer, and that is on-site. Also directly south of the property, we have an off-site wetland and another seasonal stream. This wetland is a Category 2 wetland with a 100-foot buffer, and the buffer does encumber the YMCA property, it's the yellow dashed line that you see. The geotechnical study was essentially done at the time we were considering the property for an indoor sports facility to make sure the soils didn't pose a problem, and 10 test pits were excavated on-site, and we found that the soils would be suitable for any building construction. The tree assessment found that the site has a lot of native trees, the Doug fir, western hemlock, big-leaf maple, red alder, and western red cedar, and that the health appears stable. They did find some isolated pockets of laminated root rot, but it's not significant. As you could see from the aerial, it's dense tree canopy over the entire seven-acre site. There were five trees identified at the northwest corner of the site that had some significant structural defects and, you know, posed safety hazards, and they were recommended to be looked at closer, and in fact, last year, four of them were reduced to snags with the recommendation of the arborist. So here is a slide with a preliminary site analysis, and it shows both the wetlands, it shows the detention pond at the northwest. And then another, you know, major factor to consider is that 35% of significant trees outside of all these encumbered areas would have to be retained if the site were developed. And in addition to that, the trees that would get removed would have to be replaced based on the code. So if it's, you know, a significant tree, which is greater than eight inches in diameter, you'd have a one-for-one replacement, but if it was larger than that, it could be a two-for-one or even a three-for-one replacement. So we did this little exercise on what would fit on the site, and the big purple square you see there is roughly 40,000-square-foot recreational facility, and all the gray rectangles are about, can hold about 50 cars each. And so this is, you know, the biggest building we would look at building on the site, and looking at this, we would most likely be looking at off-site mitigation to make up for the replanting of trees that would have to come out for a facility this size. So all this work was done back in 2016. At the end of this, we went back to city council in December of 2016 and presented council with a few options. The first was a two-part option to proceed with the feasibility study for indoor soccer on the YMCA property, and the other option was to proceed with the feasibility study for indoor soccer that was not site-specific, given all the constraints of the site. The second option was to pursue passive recreational use for the property. The third was to defer decisions until the pro-plan and land acquisition strategy were complete, and the fourth was to engage the Parks and Recreation Commission to deliberate and prepare a recommendation to council. And city council's direction was to go with both three and four, to defer, to finish up the pro-plan and land acquisition strategy and get the input of the Parks and Recreation Commission. So if your next, if you're following me on iCompass, your next slide is probably showing city council direction in 18, I'll come to that slide later. But I'd first like to share very briefly the results of the statistically valid survey that was done. It was a combined survey for the land acquisition strategy and the Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan in early 2017. There were questions specific to land acquisition, and here is the result from one of them. Most of the community wanted to see land acquired for passive use and preservation, and leased for active recreation. And passive use would qualify as trails, and wildlife viewing and preservation is for preserving tree canopy and sensitive areas and linking stream corridors. Questions that related to the Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan asked the community for what their priorities were, and as you can see, the higher priorities were for walking and hiking trails, restrooms and parks, and new lands for access to Lake Sammamish. And the indoor soccer fields were about 12th on the list, with 8% of the community showing interest for indoor soccer. So we took these results back to our Parks and Recreation Commission in January of this year, and they had two motions, both passed unanimously. One was not to pursue a feasibility study for an indoor fieldhouse within the Sammamish community at this time, and the second was that the development plan for the YMCA property should include passive recreation on the property. And city council's direction on February 27th, 2018, when the Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan was adopted, the same night, there were some adjustments to the Parks Capital Improvement Plan budget, and one was budget reduction with a recommendation to remove the indoor facility feasibility study in the amount of $100,000, and instead, there was a budget addition that council authorized for the YMCA property development plan for the same amount of $100,000. So where we are at, at the end of this process is, we know that the community and the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Commission, and as supported by council, is not to build an indoor sports facility at the site at this time. And the other thing we know is we are running out of time with the stipulated deadline of June 30th, 2018, to complete a development plan for this site. So with that, we come back to our questions, we're looking for direction from council to authorize staff to renegotiate the terms of this agreement and work with the YMCA to extend the deadline by one year. And we are also looking for input on your preliminary visions for this property.
So council, I think what we've heard informally from several council members thus far would, and also from, from council members, would be the desire to ask for additional time from the YMCA to extend the deadline to have this development plan. time from the YMCA to extend the deadline, to have this development plan. Believe informally, at a previous point in time, the Y had been agreeable to that, but we have not actually formally asked them. So we wanted to come back to council and get your direction to proceed. Our recommendation would be to ask the YMCA for an extension to basically flesh out this potential uses for them.
Thank you. Let me open it up for questions and comments from the council members in the sky first. Tom Hornish, Jason, Pam, you have any questions or comments first?
This is Tom. I'll jump right in. I got one question, Anjali, for the budget, and I hadn't quite focused on this in February, I guess. Do we really think, well, I guess it's a, it's a what-if, if we do go down the passive route, would we really need $100,000 to do the development plan? It seems like a much simpler than building all the structures.
I believe you are absolutely correct. We would not, that's essentially a placeholder. So it was, it was basically a repurposing of the $100,000 potential, but we would not spend it unless it were necessary. And to spend something like that, that dollar amount, it would definitely come back to council for your approval.
Okay, fair enough. And I think I will weigh in with my thoughts, and I think it makes sense to try to, to see if the Y is opening to extending it. But at the same time, I think you can probably get a feel that the discussion, even in the extension, will be, what will, what is the Y envision, and what does the Y require of us to have, if we want to do more of a passive versus an indoor facility, or whatever they were thinking, we've got to have that discussion sooner rather than later, because even if we get the extension and we're not discussing that, we're just spinning our wheels and punting, we're really seriously just punting. And then the bigger question is, if we're not going to do anything with it, and it goes back to the Y, then it's probably going to be even a worse devastation, so to speak, with, they'll sell it, and it'll be developed, and we'll lose, you know, still retain 35% of the trees, but then it's kind of the worst of all worlds, I guess, in my book, versus us trying to see what the minimum the Y needs, and if we need an extension to do that, then yes. But to answer the second question on preliminary vision, I think, it seems like we have enough information now that the indoor soccer facility is probably not the best use, or what the citizens really want or desire at this point, and given the things that we have to do with this property in particular, it probably makes sense to go a different route. But that different route is still very unknown, so we need to extend if we can, and figure that out sooner rather than later.
Good point. Jason, Pam?
Yeah, just Jason. A question regarding the assessed value of $1.9 million. I guess my question is, by extending the conversation, I'm concerned that the Y just may decide to do something that frankly, we may not want them to do. Is there, are there negotiations, conversations happening regarding potential sale? Is that even in the game? And are we going to be able to move on this? Do we have the first right of refusal, or first right to act on it, should they decide to do something else that we may not want them to do, including building a facility that, you know, frankly, we may or may not want them to do?
Well, at this particular point in time, we control the property through the lease. And so I don't believe that the Y actually is, has anything actively going forward at this particular point in time. But we would like to have that conversation with the Y by extending it, and having, I guess, having a more lengthy conversation about what their vision is, or what would be acceptable to them, as far as a recreational facility. We may have a disagreement in what their original vision was, and so there may be an opportunity for a compromise, shall we say. But ultimately, it is within the purview of the council to buy the property at fair-market value, which in all likelihood could be a little bit higher than the assessed value.
Pam Stewart?
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think Jason covered it. I think it makes sense to try to get an extension, and let us go figure out how this property fits into our pro-plan, and let, let's try to make the best use of it, based on all the great work that went into developing that plan.
Okay. You have a comment?
Yeah, I do. Actually, Mayor Malchow had submitted her thoughts about the vision for the property in an email form, and I would just like to take a moment or two and read that, so that's kind of part of the record here, too, and that can be part of the discussion this evening. So she stated, "I'd like to keep the property in the most natural state possible. I envision trails, sign is describing the wetlands, how they work, their importance, below-surface water flows, et cetera. Maybe a sheltered area with picnic benches similar to Ebright Creek Park. This area might provide an opportunity for education programs to occur, families to bring lunch in, and then hike the property. I would hope that the YMCA can agree in the recreational value a natural area can have for community, especially for a community asking for tree preservation. While recreation facility can take on different meanings, it's hard to deny that we have a facility in the form of a building in Sammamish, and a potential parcel of land that respects the desires of the community, while giving opportunity to access, exercise, enjoy the beauty of recreation in its most natural form, which doesn't have to include walls and a roof." So I wanted to submit that.
Thank you. Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, I read that earlier, and it's very well-stated. I couldn't agree more with Christie's vision. We have sensitive areas in the proximity of this property, and we really need to protect that property. And also, we would be tone-deaf if we're not looking at our capital resources for roads and infrastructure. So this is a great balance, a great opportunity for Sammamish and the Y to do programs that really educate on the environment, and provide recreation and fun for everybody at all ages.
I'll add my two bits into this. I think there have been great comments and input. While we go back to the Y and ask for the extension, as Tom had said, also define what is acceptable in it. What I would like staff to come back with us is a geographic distribution of where our current parks are, because the one issue that's been raised before in the past, council, has been that this is close proximity to both the Big Rock Park and to the Pine Lake Parks. And how does that distribution versus future distributions to the other parts of our city? Are we all going to be concentrated in the southern corner of our city? And so that we can at least have the visual representation of that would be advantageous. Additionally, while we've talked about the indoor fields here, and I think that there's a sense leaving that, given what had come back from the pro-plan, one thing that hasn't been discussed, at least today, more explicitly, are outdoor fields. As I recall, the Parks Plan described that we are 50% underserved on our outdoor fields. And given that we're losing the field behind Margaret Mead, and we've cut back on the fields, or our community fields at Eastlake and Issaquah due to the school changes, it might be beneficial to be able to see, could that be an option for us as well, to keep it, and see what might happen if we put an outdoor field out there, coupled with it, and would the Y accept that? I think their original intention was a more active facility, but to run that through. Those are my puts that I'd like to see when we come back for the further discussion, and get that feedback from the YMCA. Any other comments from the cloud? Not hearing any, any from here. Councilmember Ross? You look like you're biting your, at the chomp to get it out.
No, I agree with you, Ramiro. Fields is a community need by many of our families. But what I've said all along is, I really want to focus on existing fields, looking at upgrades of those fields for artificial turf, lights, expand the use and capacity so that we don't have to use additional land for fields, because every field, and also by doing what I just described, is lower maintenance. By adding fields, we are increasing our maintenance costs to our cities. So I really want to centralize, increase capacity, reduce cost of maintenance, and preserve our open spaces as much as possible.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, or executive session, you want to call an executive session, Chris?
No, thank you.
Not being there, then we will be adjourned at 7:50.
Very good, thank you.